Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 3 meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. We will begin our meeting as usual with the invocation led by Commissioner Rushing.
Join me if you will. Lord, we pray that you'll be with us tonight as we conduct the people's business of Union County. We pray that you would keep our neighbors to the east safe on the coast and pray that you would be with our law enforcement and first responders as they not only deal with issues in our community but issues with COVID as well. And we pray that you'd be with us all safely as we go home tonight. Thank you and in your precious name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just stated, this is case CZ 2019-010. It's got a working title of Orchard Creek. This is a request to amend the zoning map of Union County by rezoning two parcels of land from RA 40, which is residential agricultural 40,000 square foot lot size, to R6 conditional, which would be a residential district with 6,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. The applicant requests this rezoning in order to develop this 296 home, single-family neighborhood. Project also has some open space, clubhouse and amenities center, and two points of access off of Rocky River Road South. The project will meet setbacks of 25 feet in the front, 25 feet in the rear, and five feet on the sides. As you can see, the overall density is about 2.6 dwelling units per acre. These are some photographs of the general area. This is top right, this is Rocky River Road, so you can see looking north and south. And then the pictures on the left are pictures of the property itself.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
On the application, it says 10 feet on the sides.
What did I, did I not say 10?
You said 5.
I'm sorry, it is 10 feet. That was a, I'm sorry. There are no municipalities that are shown on this map, but if you were to zoom out just a little bit, the town of Mineral Springs would be slightly to the west going down Highway 75. But other than that, there are no municipalities in the general area. The property is mostly vacant. The northern piece, these, this is a 2007 layer that shows structures. These chicken houses are gone, they're not on site anymore. And the piece to the south, there's an existing mobile home park on that property. The property is zoned RA 40, and combined, it's about 114 and a half acres. Again, the zoning is RA 40 on the property. There's some commercial zoning at the corner of 75 and Rocky River. And you see there's a couple B4 pieces there, and there's also a light industrial piece just to the east going toward Monroe. As far as environmental features go, there's a couple of streams on the property. You can see them highlighted here on the map. Also, a couple ponds, they're located on the property that, these have been incorporated into the design, the proposed design of the neighborhood. And this wetland here, I think the applicant can talk a little bit more about this, but this wetlands area, I think they did have a wetlands consultant go out and take a look and don't believe it exists anymore. As far as utilities, it's kind of a mixed bag in this area. There are some properties that are served by well-inseptic, there are some properties that are served by water-inseptic. This is proposed to be served by Union County Water and Sewer. Just to the south of this is the Stonebridge Neighborhood, and it is on Union County Water and Sewer. There is water available along Rocky River Road. Sewer is the closest sewer line, or is a pump station at Stonebridge Neighborhood, so they can tie in there, or they can work their way back down Old Waxall Monroe to another pump station, by installing a new pump station. They either have either one of those options. The developer did model the system, so they worked with Union County Public Works to make sure that both of those options would work. Both of them will. It just depends on which option the developer wants to choose, and of course, they would be responsible for that cost. There have been no other requests on this property since the county established zoning, and these properties have always been zoned RA 40. I have some comments, basic comments from the schools. They basically said that this is, this property was in the school district of Western Union, Parkwood Middle School, and Parkwood High School. Projected capacity at Western Union, 67 percent. Parkwood Middle, 79, and Parkwood High School is 83. And the school's comments were that the proposed subdivision is not expected to present an adverse impact to enrollment at any of those schools. NC DOT did not have any traffic counts in the area when we went out and looked, and that's mainly because the trips were so low in that area that they just, they didn't have any recent counts. However, we do have some information about the future cross-sections of the roads. Highway 75 is proposed to be a future four-lane road with a paved shoulder. Old Waxall Monroe and Rocky River in this area are proposed to remain two lanes but with a paved shoulder on the side.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
What's the timeframe for that?
None of those projects are funded, there is no timeframe.
Okay.
The Union County Comprehensive Plan, you can see there's a lot going on, on this map. The property is actually split, so the area to the east is in a mixed residential category, which anticipates slightly higher densities. The area to the west is in the single-family, which anticipates around one unit per acre. And then, kind of this hatched area is our employment corridor. The employment corridor is really not appropriate in this, in this sense. This would really be for properties that were closer to the intersection. But in this case, the two residential categories, you have one that anticipates slightly higher densities, and one that anticipates density, densities of around one unit per acre. The density, again, is approximately 2.6 units per acre. Since this development is partially within that mixed residential category, we should expect slightly higher densities. However, those densities should also be tempered by the fact that the property also lies in that single-family residential category. While the density of the project should be higher than one unit, based on the adopted comprehensive plan, 2.6 acres, in staff's opinion, is probably a little bit high. A density closer to two is probably more appropriate. Those are staff's comments. If the project is approved, it is recommended that those comments, that some thought be given to design and building materials of the houses. The planning board considered this request at their July meeting. They heard from the applicant, as well as several nearby residents that had some concerns. And planning made, the planning board made a unanimous recommendation to deny the rezoner request. And making that recommendation, the planning board noted that it was concerned about increased traffic in the area, stormwater runoff, and that they felt the request was out of character with the rural nature of the area, and that the proposed density was a little too high. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
You made a statement early that this probably, property hadn't been attempted to be rezoned in the past.
Correct.
Isn't this the same property we voted on last year?
I went back and looked, because I remember our conversation earlier, and I didn't see where this one had actually come to the board. There have been some meetings with the planning board, but it never made it this far.
Okay. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pump stations that are looking at using, is this in the Rocky River sub-basin, or is it in the Yadkin?
I believe this would be in the Rocky River.
So it's not in the Catawba Basin? But that's where it would be served, the 12 Mile Creek Plant?
Yes, it would be served at the 12 Mile Creek Plant, and I believe this probably is in the Yadkin Basin, I'm sorry.
And the, yeah, this is in the Rocky River sub-basin that goes to Yadkin?
Yes, we go into Yadkin Plant, again, via a pump station.
Right. The pump station that's at Stonebridge, and the other pump station that would be required to take it back across, are they sized properly to accept this and then some, or what are they, what are they sized to accept?
I believe the one at Rocky River, or at Stonebridge would have to be increased. Again, the developer did the modeling on that, working through Union County Public Works, but I believe the one at Stonebridge would have to be upsized. And then, the other pump station would be an entirely new pump station. And all that would be done at the, at the developer's expense.
Right.
And I would say for the developer to clarify anything that I may have spoken about on that.
Commissioner Gray, ask a question.
Lee, this is not in the Rocky River sub-basin, is it? I mean, it's in the?
It's in the Yad, yes, it is.
Catawba.
Catawba.
Catawba, yeah.
Right. But it, but it, but it would still need a pump station to get to the treatment?
I know, but what I'm saying is, I was hearing you say the Rocky River sub-basin.
Yeah, I'm confused now.
I was thinking about Rocky River Road, and, because it's on Rocky River Road, but it is in, it's in the Catawba sub-basin, yes.
And we do have capacity?
Yes, sir, we have capacity there.
Why does it need, oh, excuse me, why does it need the pump station to get it over, is there a ridge there that I would assume would be the Catawba and Yadkin PD Rocky River Sub Basin?
Um, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't know the, the topography in the area and why it can't get from gravity from here to 12 Mile, but it will need to work with a series of pump stations to get there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hills?
The, to get to the Stonebridge Pump Station, or the other pump station, they'd have to go across other properties, right?
Either that, or down the road right-of-way.
Has any, any validation been given that, that they can get right-of-way through that?
That, that would be up to the developer to obtain that right-of-way.
Was the applicant going to speak, Lee?
Yes, the applicant's here.
All right, how are you? I brought a thumb drive for our presentation, if that works. If I can just figure out where to put it in. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
There you go, thank you. Well, good evening, I'm Scott Stone, I'm with American Engineering, and we've been working throughout the planning process with this project. We're excited tonight to talk about what we think could be really a great community for Union County. And some of the questions that came up previously, we were going to address in our presentation. Orchard Creek, we think, can be that, that great community that really kind of helps show what the standard should be for this part of Union County. It should have, the, the kind of amenities it should have, the, the type of quality design. And what we are presenting and proposing is large open spaces, walking trails, meandering paths, the paths for the walking trails is going to go through around the, the large ponds. It's going to have a lot of, you know, highly sought-after amenities, you're going to have just a lot of high-quality design elements. What makes this one a little bit unique compared to a lot of, you know, a lot of subdivisions and proposed suburban developments, because this is not what this is, this is 34 percent of the property is going to be open space. So it's not jamming in as much property as possible. It's, it's larger lots than a lot of the subdivisions we see in other, other jurisdictions and other counties. We see, we see a lot of 40-foot and 50-foot wide lots, and here, you're going to have 60-foot wide lots with, with, you know, 10-foot side setbacks. And we know that's important for, for a lot of focuses, for those side setbacks to be that big. And we want to also make sure that there was enough units, and we're going to talk a little about the density, but we want to make sure the units were significant enough, because if you don't have enough den, enough density, enough units, you're not going to be able to have the amenities, you're not going to be able to have the clubhouse. And, you know, most importantly, you're not going to have enough lots that would generate enough revenue to cover the cost of that off-site sewer, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. But that off-site sewer is about 3,000 linear feet, and it's, it's pretty expensive to be able to put that in. And it, we feel like it fits the spirit of that 2025 plan. You just saw, it's kind of in a mix in between, you know, the parcel is kind of split, but it's that mixed residential, kind of, I think, really, this is what was thought of, it's going to be a little higher densities than what is typical in, in other places. This isn't farther out where the, the future land use plan calls for agricultural or something like that. This is, in, at least parts, parts of the site call for mixed residential, so we think this is a great fit. We want to talk about, a little bit about our design process, our planning process, because we think this was important to, to how we got here today. We really did a lot of listening to, to everyone, really, to staff, to commissioners, planning commissioners, county commissioners, neighbors, everyone that we could to, to get input on what's important to them, what's important for, what would make for a great community. And we think we've incorporated all those. We, we made sure that we incorporated the existing land, the topography, the wetlands, the natural features, anything we could to make this a great community that way as well. But we also wanted to make sure we established a reasonable number of homes. When we first, you know, whatever, always ends up happening with, with planning firms and engineering firms, they say, how many lots can you fit, kind of thing? And we could have fit a lot more lots than this, and hundreds more lots than this, but that wasn't appropriate. It wasn't appropriate for this property, this part of the county, and so we did, that was a non-starter for, for the developer, and it's a non-starter for us. So that's why we've, we were at the number that we are now. We thought that was a reasonable number to present, that would balance that need for enough critical mass to, to be able to pay for the off-site infrastructure, as well as the, the amenities. And we did work very closely with county staff, and I want to thank them for their, their great work. We actually submitted a sketch plan and went through a couple of rounds of approval, so we actually have an approved sketch plan, which means this has gone a lot farther than a lot of rezonings do. And so it's, it's had all the input from all the different county departments, as, as well as the traffic study that was done, and the sewer model that's already been talked about. Some of the amenities, real quick, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but we really think this is an opportunity to create a unique, really, community for, for this county. And you're going to see a lot of great walking trails and open spaces, you're going to see a, you know, a top-notch, you know, community clubhouse, and that's, we think is important. Couple of the things that were brought up earlier that we think are very important to keep in mind, right now, Parkwood Middle School and High School and Western Union Element are all under capacity significantly. We did some analysis, and if those schools were all running at capacity, that would be $2.16 million more in revenue coming to the county school system than, than is now. So essentially, we're leaving over $2 million on the table right now for those schools not being at capacity. The, this, this community would not get it to capacity, but it would certainly help. And if you, if it was running at capacity, that's a lot more money for a lot of things, for teachers, for, and, and as you know, the, the facilities are already paid for. We're already paying for a lot of the fixed costs with these schools, so to make them as efficient as possible financially, it would be helpful if we had a few more students here. This is a completely different issue here than it would be in, in Western Union, and, you know, where you've got overcapacity. Here, you don't have that issue. Going back to the, the sewer and the, and the, the treatment capacity, we've got documentation, this is, and this is recent, this process has been going on for a while, for the last year and a half is, and, or longer, but this, as of June, there is capacity for water and sewer at the treatment plants. And the sewer model that was completed, we would have to upgrade the, the Stonebridge Pump Station. I think right now, it's at a half, .5 MGD is what the peak levels were, and so we'd be, have to be upgraded for that. So we're, the, the applicant is prepared to do that, and they know that that's part of the process. But this is also about 3,000 linear feet of sewer that's going, would have to get, get added to that. So as part of that sewer, about $1 million and a half to put that in, but then the benefit on the other side to Public Works will be, you know, a little bit more than $2 million in, in development fees from water and sewer development fees. So a pretty significant amount of fees that come in, but yet not having to, to pay for the, the actual sewer line itself, or the pump station improvement. As part of this process, we really listened to all the stakeholders, we tried to as best we could, and that, that included at the planning commission. We heard some things at the planning commission meeting that we had not heard previously. One of those we had heard was the neighbors, there was at least one neighbor concerned about the, the tenants in the trailer home park that is on one of the parcels. The property owner is committed to helping financially support the, those folks in relocating, and that is something that's, that's come up since then, and I think one of the speakers here is going to speak to that tonight as well. But that's something that they felt was important, and we wanted to make sure that, that everyone was treated fairly and have a, a smooth transition from their residence. We've heard a lot of different things about density. In some cases, some people thought it was a little too high, in some cases, people didn't think it was, was high, you know, was too high, based on where it is in the county. So that's, as we listened to it, that's what we heard. And then we continued to listen to the residents as well, including the planning commission. We had not heard from a lot of the, unlike other places where we've done some rezonings, where there's a lot of engagement with the community, they had not, we had not heard much from those, those neighbors. And we're, but we're certainly open to continue to have discussions with them and be engaged with them as this process moves forward, and hopefully, we're approved and, and be, are able to move forward to, to the next stage. One of the things we heard from the community during the, it came up in the public, in the planning commission, was about traffic. And traffic is always something that comes up, but as you heard previously, there is no traffic counts from NC DOT, because it's just not enough volume of traffic. And, but one of the things that was presented was that there's a lot of accidents on, on Rocky River, South Rocky River. What we actually found was that there, there had been an increasingly number, increasing number of accidents, but actually, South Rocky River had been realigned a few years ago, and it was a little bit more, quite a bit more dangerous, and there was a tree there as well. So that's, that's, I think it was probably right around 2016, when, I think, when that was done. And you see that, that actually has made an impact to the, the decline in, in accidents in that, in that stretch, so. So that's been very, very helpful. In conclusion, it's, you know, we think this is a great community for the county, increasing the tax base, but also really the water and sewer impact fees, getting sewer extended to more residents, and in a part of the county that's, that needs some additional growth so we can drive some more commercial as well. And we really think the schools would benefit from having a few more students there. And we are, there was a full traffic study done, and the recommendations that were made in the traffic study are being implemented in, in this, in this plan. That's, I think, all I have.
Questions? Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you. Mr. Stone, I think that that is in the Rocky River sub-basin, I just looked at our GS, GIS maps, and that may be why you have to pump across the ridge to get it to fall. Is that your understanding?
I know there's no sewer, there is not sewer between, you know, near our, near our site, so, and it's, I guess where the inverts were from the elevation that we would have to get to, to there, it's just, the closest sewer we could connect to is there, and it's just, we couldn't make the hydraulics work.
Yeah, I think you're on the-
Certainly would rather do it by gravity.
You're on the edge, but I think you're, you're on the Rocky River sub-basin side of that edge.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we, when we're doing these pump stations to get it across, especially if we did a new one, you know, we're maintaining one already, and now if we would be doing another one, what, what is the preference? Is it, is that going to be something up to you guys, or is that going to be up to us?
Well, I think the, whatever would be most cost-effective in, in terms of being able to obtain the easements, and we've already, you know, had some discussions with folks on, on the easements, probably be, let me go back to my one slide here, those are the two alternatives right there. And I think alternative one, I think, was the, was the preferred, just because it was the, the easiest to get to. And we would have to upgrade the pump station, though, for that one. I think right now, it's, it's .5 MGD, and we, and the concern was from the modeling that you could have peaks that are above that, so that's why we'd have to upgrade that. So having, you know, when, when we upgrade that, that's something that the developers committed to do, and you're going to have some, you can't do that without having some improvements made to it. So hopefully, that's something that, you know, that's been there for a few years, so hopefully that'll help.
Can, can somebody with our staff just confirm, make sure that?
I was, I had it pulled up, too. It is, it is right on the, is right on the edge. The extreme, what it looks to be western corner of the property is, is in the Yadkin, but the vast majority is in the, is in the, the Rocky River, so it is.
Which, that's probably why we have to pump across.
Yes, that is exactly why.
Stonebridge is in the Rocky River sub-basin.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, this time we will open the public hearing. First to sign up is Dan McMoore.
Thank you. I represent the, one of the sellers of the property. And he is located in the eastern part of the state, and tied up tonight with the storm problems on the coast. But, Mr. Craig is his name, and he is the owner of the property where the trailers, sort of, mobile homes are. And his intent is to, he sent me an email this afternoon, that basically says that he's willing to pay up to $50,000 for the total relocation of eight or nine trailers or mobile homes that families are in that area. And he said he wanted to make sure that was known to you gentlemen tonight. So he felt that was a substantial amount of money for that problem, and they needed assistance to use it. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hayden McAtier.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have DOT accident records from 2007 to the end of January of this year. While it may be true that the accident numbers have gone down, I went to Parkwood, I do not claim to be a smart man, but if we add 296 houses on a road, at the last planning board meeting, they were alleged to be four and five bedrooms each. We can all do the math, that's over 1,200 new cars on that road, because I guarantee everybody eventually is going to have a car. More cars, more wrecks. The last wreck, not a week after the last planning board meeting, me and my dad had to stand out there at our road, put a new mailbox in the ground. We had a Jeep, one of our cars, weather hazards on in the curve, another one on the other side of the curve, and people were still flying past us at 60 miles an hour. If Ms. Fran had not had a BMW parked in her driveway, there would have been a car in her living room two months ago? One month ago? So, I don't think any of the residents nearby are against development, but what we are against is developing, not smart. That two-lane road, that two-lane road cannot handle another 1,200 cars on it a day. 75 can't handle another 1,200 cars on the road a day. I think that's the biggest issue that me, my parents, my grandmother have with this is- is it can't handle it right now. And if y'all want to see this, I will be more than happy to pass it around to you. I know the planning board said they were gonna keep a copy just in case I brought it again, if anybody wants to grab that. There's over 20 pages worth of accident reports in that. And like I said, it has been updated since then because that was just from January of this year. And I'd, I'd strongly suggest, I'd, I'd strongly suggest taking a look at that before you vote. There has been three fatalities. Two memorials are still to this day up at the Dosser Road intersection. And again, that is just from the Rocky River roundabout to the Dosser Road intersection. That's less than a mile and a half. It gets worse the closer you get down the Parkwood. So those numbers are gonna go up. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time and efforts. And I wanna thank our neighbors for their comments, and I will assure you that all their comments have been taken into consideration. Well pleased with what American Engineering has done on this project. I'm pleased with the way staff has worked with us to dial it in on what we can and can't do. I really can't add a whole lot to what's already been said from Mr. Stone, but I'd like to say that I think this would be an outstanding neighborhood. I think if the drivers would obey the speed limits, most of the accidents would disappear. Not all of them, 'cause, you know, you got deer and things like that crossing the road. Every American family in this country deserves to have a home. There's a, Union County, I had my son go through Allen Take, North Carolina Realtor Association, and the supply of homes in Monroe is, uh, slightly over a one-month supply. The supply of homes in Union County is like one per, 1.2 month supply of homes. The supply to feel comfortable should be around five to six month supply. So with all that said and done, there is a shortage of homes and we desperately need these homes. We tried to make, I've tried to comply with the standards of the county, zoning, planning. I've tried to listen to what the neighbors have to said and have to say, and we've, we've, we've listened to them. And I've tried to adjust through American Engineering as many of these comments as I possibly can. Other than that, um, I wanna be a good neighbor. We have changed our builder out there. In the last three weeks, we were going with Essex Homes, now we're going with True Homes. Uh, we've continued on this, either be, excuse me, being approved or disapproved. And so we, you know, I spent some time with David out at True Homes and he builds a really, really good product. And, uh, I'm, you know, I'll be proud to have him on board. If I can answer any questions, I will. And if I can, anything I can do to help the neighbors, I'll be glad to. Uh, we spoke to Mr. Craig and your concern about relocating the tenants there. He's gonna take care of that. So we do listen to you. We listen to everyone, and I just want you to know that. So if there's anything I can do, please let me know. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chuck McAtier.
Gentlemen, thanks for letting me speak with you tonight. Um, yeah, a lot of us, we, a lot of it is based on, we think, traffic in the area. We had another wreck since our last meeting with the planning board at the roundabout. So it's, it's continuing. Uh, the, the, the problem is, the curve has been straightened a little bit, but now instead of them coming around there at 45, they're coming around there at 65. It's a game to see how fast you can take that curve. And it's, it's, it's very dangerous. My dad has been rear in it, trying to turn in his driveway, totaled his truck. Before our last planning board meeting, I myself was almost in a five-car head-on collision. Guy was behind me, I'm trying to turn in, he whips out. And on, and to oncoming traffic, another way, three cars had to go out in the field in order for him not to hit them. And he just took, you know, he took off, just playing that game, seeing how fast he could run that Indy car around there. So that's a big concern. And I heard also, previous speaker said, uh, they had talked with the surrounding community and hadn't really got any resistance to it. I've got an online, uh, a petition with over 170 people from the surrounding community that do not want this, and they've made comments to the effect of that. Be glad to pro, provide that for you if you wanna look at it. And the residents that would be here, where are they gonna work? Ain't no jobs in any Monroe or Waxaw, they're going to Charlotte. So I said again, goes back to traffic, back and forth, back and forth, every day. So the odds of those on that downhill slide, it's gonna go back up, promise you, if you put this here. More deaths, more cars on the road, gonna be more deaths. It's a mile and a half, that little stretch. Hayden, how many wrecks?
21 since 2007.
Okay. Mile and a half, that, that needs to be thought about. I don't really have anything else other than that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Fran Faraci, is it Faraci?
Hi, good evening. I live, um, directly at 1719 South Rocky River Road, directly across where the subdivision is going to be built. They were talking about the impact of the traffic. They also gonna have the driveways of in and out of the subdivision right between, I own the house next door too. So in front of that house and in front of my house. Currently coming out of my house, there's a huge dip to the left. And you take your life into your hands, even just, how many, you know, how many times do you have to wait to make sure that there's nobody in or how, somebody plowing down the road to go into that dip? I mean, I've been cursed at and whatever because people come on, on my, you know, on my rear end, just coming down that road. And I even tell my old, my youngest, we waited to drive, he's like, "What are you waiting for?" I said, "'Cause you're gonna learn when you drive next year, you're gonna wait 10 seconds and you're gonna wait another 10 seconds and wait another 10 seconds that there's nobody in that, in that little dip coming down the road." So that's another big concern. All those cars coming out of that subdivision is gonna impact those accidents on that road severely. And what they were talking about with the mobile community, I mean, that's great that they're gonna offer them now, the, the funds to relocate, but I do property management. We have, um, mobile communities that we also manage. We have some vacant lots there now that we're told we can't put homes on. So I don't know where they're gonna move them. Some of these are older homes and over a certain amount of years, you cannot move those homes. Some of them are older and some of them I walked into that are beautiful inside, 'cause they, they underpin them, they did amazing work. You walk inside, you don't even know that it's a mobile home. So if they get some kind of permission to move them somewhere else, I haven't seen it. I wish we can move, I mean, if you find out that you can move them, this all goes through, I wish they would read out, reach out to me because we have lots open at our office to put some of those mobile homes. The other concern about the schools, um, maybe there's not an impact now, but our buses are impacted. Our kids now sit three to a seat. Sometimes they're sitting on the edge of the seat, the fourth person on the edge of the seat facing the aisle. So I don't even know if our buses, are we gonna put more buses out? Do we have the expense for the buses? And the other, other thing was the substation. Once a developer leaves, is the county gonna be paying to maintain it if it breaks down? That's another concern of ours. It's just the 2 million coming into our area, how much is it, we gonna be taxed more to, um, service it? Otherwise, you know, we're not against building, we're not against giving people homes, 'cause that's what I do every day. I try to find somebody else a home. We build homes for shelters, we get people out of everywhere to try to find them a home. But there, there's some reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker, so at this time I'll close the public hearing. Next item, uh, on the agenda is informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, state whether you're a resident of Union County, indicate the municipality in which you reside, if any, and state the topic about which you intend to speak. You have three minutes to make your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the Assistant County Manager, see to your right. Our first speaker this evening is Natho Haley.
Good evening. My name is Natho Haley. I live at 205 Old Williams Road, Wingate, North Carolina. And I'm addressing you concerning the Confederate statue that stands in front of the old courthouse. First of all, I'd like to tell you that we have not endorsed or asked anyone for any kind of protest. In fact, we have tried, kept it low-keyed to keep that from happening. But we would like for you all to add this to your agenda at your next meeting and come up with a decision about moving the statue, even though we know it's history. It's history for some people, but not for all people. A person has agreed to move the statue at their expense to a location where it would be visible and accept, and acceptable to a number of people. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope you will give great consideration to the removal of the statue in front of the old courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Reagan Hensley.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Reagan Hensley and I live on Crow Road in the Parkwood District. And I would first like to say thank you to you all for allowing us to come here and speak tonight on the old courthouse that sits in, the monument that sits in front of the old To understand this monument, we must first understand the Confederacy. There is no doubt among reputable historians that the Confederacy was established upon the premise of white supremacy, supremacy and that the South fought the Civil War to preserve its slave labor. The monument here in Monroe was erected in 1910 at the height of Jim Crow. And on July 4th, 1910, at the unveiling of the monument, Thomas Walter Bickett, who was a Monroe native, rendered the dedication speech where he recites that "On the smoldering ruins of a hallowed past, the Southern man began to build anew. They stood a white civilization and a white race. And today, North Carolina holds in trust for the safety of the nation, the purest Anglo-Saxon blood, to be found on the American shores." He goes on to quote a New York newspaper and says, "The 15th Amendment was the most colossal blunder and crime in the history of the civilized world." And please allow me to remind you all that the 15th Amendment gave black men the right to vote. He then finishes with, "Everyone, the people are beginning to recognize that the South and only the South is competent to deal with the race question. We're not sure what that subliminal question was then, however, the blatant question today is, when allowing the statue to stand, are you not allowing the words of white supremacy in which it was commemorated to stand? I want you to imagine what it's like for me, a black woman, to walk into the courthouse and be greeted by a monument that was erected to memorialize the fight to keep our ancestors enslaved. Could I, or any other person of color, expect to receive justice in this place? This monument sends a message loud and clear that this is a white man's world." You may argue that the courthouse is just, is already in a museum, however, this monument has no context. Where's the context? It stands 40-foot hall, tall on Main Street and with no education, where the main message is that the words of Confederacy on July 4th, 1910, along with its racist ideologies are to be honored and revered. It's time to provide some context and move this monument outside of the public eye. All over North Carolina, in cities such as Asheville and Gastonia, they are removing these Confederate relics. By allowing this racist relic to stand on Main Street in front of the old courthouse, this county is allowing and continuing to send the message that the Negro is not equal to the white man and that slavery subordination to the superior race is his natural and normal condition, as spoken by Confederate Vice President Alexander H. Stevens. This is not a hail mary attempt to erase history, but instead, it's a challenge to this board, this community, and this county to overcome racial inequality and confront and teach the facts of our history and that we will be better than our past. We will not tolerate subliminal nor blatant reminders of our racist past in Union County, North Carolina. Walter Bickett asked his own question, so here is mine. Is this board going to appease the continuing display of racism for the sake of your seat? Or will you take a step out of the shadows into the light of the right side of history? Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Burrell, Burrell. These are two that had signed up previously to speak. Thank you. That concludes our informal comments. Next item will be our additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. I would wa, uh, make one note that, uh, you have before you item 24 on the consent agenda of the CARES Act sub-grant, uh, which is a reworded or additional information, which will replace the one currently there. We have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Consent agenda? Have a motion to approve consent. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Rush. That takes us to Old Business, CZ 2020001, Secure Turf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, this item, the public hearing was held before this board at the last meeting. Uh, this is a request to rezone a piece of property, um, in Union County from RA 200 conditional to light industrial, um, conditional. And the applicant did request that to operate landscaping business, um, organic materials, recycling, um, business, um, and some of the daily operations would include incineration, grinding, um, screening and processing of organic materials. The planning board, um, as you'll recall, did unanimously recommend denial of this request. Um, and again, like I said, the board conducted a public hearing at their last meeting. Um, they did hear from the applicant where he described their request. And they also heard, um, from several speakers that were both for and against the request. Many of the speakers, um, noted that the proposed, um, facility, um, they felt like it would increase truck traffic in the area. They felt like there would be some water and air quality, um, issues. They felt that it was incompatible, um, with adjacent land uses. They, um, noted noise concerns and they also noted, uh, their concerns that this, um, request arose from a violation, um, of the zoning ordinance, violation of the previous conditions of the, uh, first rezoning to RA 200. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Commissioner...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consistency statement rejecting the rezoning petition, CZ 2020-001, to rezone the property appearing on the tax map as parcel number 08-261-009 in the Goose Creek Township. The property from RA 200 CZ to LI CZ and deny the rezoning petition, CZ 2020-01, to rezone the property from RA 200 CZ to LI CZ.
Hearing, none all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Takes us to new business. We have no new business this evening. Takes us to county manager's comments. Mr. Watts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. My pleasure, and I'd like to offer congratulations to Deputy Sheriff Tiffany Hill, who was presented with the Third Quarter Caught in the Act Award. I had the pleasure of presenting that award to her this morning, along with Union County Sheriff Eddie Cathy. Ms. Hill, or Deputy Hill, recently intervened with a student that, with Union County Public Schools that she was familiar with that was in crisis. Deputy Hill works with the school system on a regular basis and is familiar with the collaborative behavioral health initiative that county government and the school system partner with. And so she put several pieces of the puzzle together and helped advocate on behalf of that student, and the outcome was good, and we thank her for that, and we recognized her for that this morning. Secondly, I would like to remind the board that you have a special meeting this Thursday, August the 6th, beginning with breakfast at 8:30, and the meeting will begin at 9:00. The day is planned so that our planning department will be giving the board an update on the work that has been done on the comprehensive plan thus far this year, and be looking for some direction from the board based on the work that's been done so far. We'll eat lunch, and then in the afternoon, we will be hearing from our Public Works Department on wastewater infrastructure on the western side of Union County. I failed to mention that in the morning, we're offering our municipalities an opportunity to provide the board with in-person direct feedback on the comprehensive plan options that have been presented to them, and that they feel best meet the needs of their respective municipalities. So you'll be hearing from municipal representatives on Thursday. Lastly, it was very sad news that we received at the end of last week, the passing of our good friend and coworker for many years, Mr. Lark Pliler, and I would offer condolences to his family at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Aitken.
No comments.
Commissioner Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to take this time to recognize Lark Pliler, and, you know, there's a lot of people in the community that have, you know, people have fond memories of, and Lark Pliler was a good man, and, and he was, he'll always be remembered. You know, we, when we had a sheriff's race between Eddie Cathy and Lark Pliler, you know, a lot of people hated we couldn't vote for both. Both were outstanding members of law enforcement, and we love Sheriff Cathy, and we love Lark Pliler. And I do, like you, wish condolences to his family. And just, a funny story, a lot of people don't know about Lark, is he got thrown in a tornado one time. The car he was driving, deputy car, was picked up and thrown, and he made it through alive. And just, everybody's got a Lark Pliler story that know him. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hales.
No comment.
Mr. Ray.
No comment.
I have no further comments. A motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.